Good evening, Kabir.
Hi, Matt. How are you?
Doing well. How are you?
Not bad.
I'm sorry that we haven't been able to touch base quickly about the email, but I do want to set that up with you at some point.
No worries. Just let me know. You have my number.
Sounds good.
Hi, Linda, Robyn, Debbie.
Hello, folks.
Steve.
Okay, greetings, everyone. I note that the time is 7 o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. And our first item is the election of the council president. Would anyone like to make a nomination?
Yep. So I nominate Steve Circo, my fellow council member for the last year, to be president of council. First, he is our most experienced member, and his quiet leadership has been evident throughout the past year. His contributions to the town are many, and I'm sure he will serve as well as council president. I'll keep it short.
I see council member Heller second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Although it's unanimous, congratulations, Mr. Council President. Would you like, is there anything you would like to say at this time?
Well, first off, thank you very much for the vote of confidence. I look forward to work with everyone. I look forward to continuing to serve the residents of this fine town and try to make things, continue to make things better. We'll pass along that I was talking with one of my neighbors over the weekend, and she indicated a desire to have the council president rotate and change around perhaps more frequently than has in the past. And I'm in favor of that, so I'm looking forward to maybe somebody else assuming the mantle in another year or so.
Okay, well, that's, you know, that will be up to the council at the time.
Yeah.
And perhaps, you know, it's a nice suggestion, but it's really up to the council. Okay, thank you. The next item is our public comment period. And Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to speak at this time?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
A move that we approve.
I think I saw council. I think I saw council member Heller first, so I'll take the second from Circo. Is there discussion?
I was muted.
It's okay. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you. The next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there, is there a motion?
A move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Okay, thank you. And I saw council member Barr second. Is there discussion? I would like to say one thing about the, about the meeting dates. We made every effort to change the September meeting to after the second night of Rosh Hashanah, but unfortunately, our town attorney is not available that night. So in August, if it appears that there are some topics that require as great participation as possible, we might consider then, we might ask the council to change the date, but we'll wait and see. And we'll, we're always very respectful of all these holidays, and we will adjust if necessary. But thank you, Councilmember Heller, for raising that, that issue. Is there further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed. Thank you, thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of a building permit application submitted by Robert Sadloff for the demolition of a playhouse and construction of a shed in the rear yard of the property located at 4902 Essex Avenue. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. Am I, let me just, okay, I'm not muted. Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back in, back in March, actually, Mr. Sadloff approached the town about plans to remove an existing playhouse on the property and to install a small shed of the same dimensions in the same location on the property. And so.
Matt, hold on a second. Doug, is there, is there some background noise?
I'll turn it off.
Okay, thank you.
Um, sorry.
Sorry, sorry, sir.
Um, so Mr. Sadloff finalized an application with the town in the month of May. And I believe our building administrator, Doug Lohmeyer, has reviewed it and offered his recommendations for the council, so I will turn it over to Mr. Lohmeyer, except to say one last thing that because the, the, the structure is going in the same location as an existing structure on the property, no trees will be affected during, during the construction, and so Tolbert did not have any report for.
Okay.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Good evening.
Doug, thank you.
Yeah. The applicant is proposing to build an eight-foot-by-10-foot shed approximately nine feet tall. Since it's under the 10-foot height limit, it has to meet the minimum setbacks of five feet from the rear and side property line. And I would recommend that the council approve the demolition permit for the playhouse and the construction of the shed. But I also would recommend that since the property line is not well-defined, that they locate the shed six feet from the rear and side property line rather than five, just as a safety factor. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. I note that Robert Sadloff is here. Would you wish to comment? Add anything on the report or anything to the report?
You're muted at the moment.
You're muted.
Thank you for reviewing this. Essentially, I'm replacing existing thing with exactly this, or more or less the exact same dimensions. I can remember back when, when Mayor Slavin's predecessor came to my home with a, with a yardstick to check how far it was from the fence. And I was glad that I passed muster back then, and I'm quite sure that we'll pass muster this time. So I would, I look forward to having town approval for our plans.
Okay, thank you. So now I will take questions from the council. And I would like to say to the new council members, we were ahead of schedule on our agenda, so don't be afraid to ask questions so that you can get to learn the process as comprehensively as possible. So don't be afraid. So we will start with Council President Circo. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Sadloff, the, our town engineer recommended just increase the setback a little bit since, since we're not doing a boundary survey. Is that an issue? Can you comply with that recommendation?
Look, the existing structure is five feet from each side. The town rules are, are under 10 feet, five feet from each side. I'll move it in a bit. I mean, I'll make sure that it's, it's well within, you know, more than five feet, closer to six feet. So I'm, I'm not going to have a fight about all this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barr.
No further questions.
Okay, Councilmember Frank, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller.
I just want to know one thing. Is this okay with your kids?
Getting rid of the playhouse?
Yeah.
They're actually looking forward to having the shed.
Okay, just checking that. I thought that was really the most important question out of this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kumar.
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
None at this time, no, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I, a move that we approve the building permit application submitted by Robert Sadloff for the demolition of a playhouse, the construction of a shed in the rear yard of the property located at 4902 Essex Avenue. And, and appreciate his willingness to increase the setback slightly.
I second.
Okay, I saw Councilmember Frank. Mr. Town Attorney, is that motion legally and technically sufficient?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Assuming that the, the approval is for the plans as submitted with the
location increase to six feet. So when, when Matt issues the permit, that should be a condition of the permit, that it be located six feet from the rear and side property lines.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Is there?
I don't want to be too careful about this, but that's.
Hold on. No, no, no. You're, you, now it's council time.
All right.
So are your, are there any questions about the?
No questions, but I would, I would. Are you asking council if there are any questions?
So if there, if there's, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor? All those opposed. Okay, thank you. The next item is the building administrators' report.
Just a few items to go over quickly. At 46, 4816 Dorset, the detached garage at the rear has been installed. The county has signed off on the permit, and I'll be doing a final walkthrough on that property this week. And a new item that's not on your list is that 5410 Surrey, they're converting the existing carport to a deck with two access ramps. The town issued a building permit on May 4th, and that work is under construction. At 5516 Trent, the permit expires on August 20th, but according to the contract, they will not need an extension. They should be done by then. And at 5508 Uppingham, the county has signed off on their permit, and I'm scheduling a site visit to do a final on that property. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. So to the new council members, this, I will go, we will go, I will run through the, the five of you. But this is your opportunity to ask our building administrator questions about any of the current pending building projects. So we will start with Council President Circo. Do you have any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Frank.
Yes, I have a question. At 4519 Cumberland, in the mornings, there is discharge from a hose into the street carrying muddy waters from the basement construction site. Is that in compliance with Montgomery County Sediment Control Regulations? There's mud along Cumberland, Little Cumberland, on both sides of the street as a result of this.
It's my understanding that does comply because they have to pump the water out of the basement foundation. But it's also a condition that they clean up the street after it gets full of sediment. So we've contacted the developer, and he's cleaned it a couple of times, but we can contract the Sediment Control Inspector and have them look into it also.
Okay, I thought they had to contain the water on property.
No, they don't. They can't control, contain the sediment control after a heavy rain, no. It's allowed to leave the site, but it should be as clean as possible.
There was no heavy rain, but second, the sidewalk in front of that property is a complete mess. Is that appropriate?
I'll contact the Sediment Control Inspector and have him look at it.
That's not sediment. It's just they destroyed the sidewalk and you can't walk on it.
They will replace it at the end of the construction, and we've asked them to put in small stone or put in asphalt to make it walkable, so I'll look into it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is that it, Jack?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kumar.
Yes, I do have a question. Doug, you, you mentioned a couple of items that are not in the report, and you spoke too quickly for me. Do you mind just repeating them?
The item that wasn't on the list?
Yes.
Okay. At 5410 Surrey Street, they are converting an existing carport. That's in the cul-de-sac at the end of Surrey. They're converting an existing carport to a deck with two handicap ramps. And the town permit was issued on May 4th, and the construction of the deck has begun.
Great. And when did the council approve that permit?
At the May meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Is that it, Councilmember Kumar? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. The next item is a public hearing motion to consider approval of the removal of four Leland Cypress trees all dead at the property located at 5405 Greystone Street as recommended by the town arborist. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, I just got a message from Tolbert, actually, about 10 minutes ago, saying he was planning to jump on at 7:15, so he's not quite here yet.
Okay, well, let's, let's, why don't we go, I see that our tennis committee chair is here. Why don't we go to that item so that she doesn't have to stay on all night?
Hi, guys.
Okay, hold on, hold on a second. Okay, so we're going to item number A, to adopt the 2021 tennis rules as recommended by the town tennis committee.
It's so nice to see the new members and the new council, and I think it's fairly straightforward and, but let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Ball.
No questions.
Councilor Frank.
I guess a small question. Was there discussion of pickleball at all?
Yes, not, not for these rules. These rules were actually submitted in March, but here's the status on pickleball. And I sent you all an email, although I, I don't know if I, I sent it to the council. Anyway, I can talk to Matt and make sure you all get it, but here's the status on pickleball. A resident posted asking if anyone was interested. He got 25 expressions of interest and some expressions of concern. The committee, the tennis committee created a subcommittee which is exploring it. What we're doing is interviewing every area club. So we're interviewing about 15 clubs in the region to ask them their experience with pickleball. We're also having a demonstration of.
Well, hold on.
Saturday.
No, there's no, there's no demonstration because the, the town facilities are closed. So we're, we're planning to discuss this with the council president about having this on the work session agenda for June 15.
Okay, so anyway, we're, we are on the case of a careful exploration, and we will, we have already have a draft report to the council from the tennis committee, which is very thorough and includes what Montgomery County is doing as a county in their parks and wrecks, what the clubs are doing, what, you know, other information. So we are going to give you a full report.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Kumar.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, there, does any resident or guest wish to comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I recommend that we adopt the 2021 tennis rules as recommended by the town tennis committee.
Is there a second?
I second that.
I saw Heller first. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for your hard work. We'll see you soon.
Great, thank you. Thanks to the new members. Call me with any questions.
Is Mr.
Yes, Dr. Feather is joining us right now.
I, oh, there he is. Okay. Okay, so I'm called, so I'm going back to item number four. Public hearing motion to consider approval of the removal of four Leland Cypress trees all dead at the property located at 5405 Greystone Street as recommended by the town arborist. Dr. Feather.
Well, there, I just noticed there's a mistake on this. It's not 55, it's not 5405 Greystone. It's 4911 Essex is where this tree removal is occurring. And that's my, that, that's my mistake. I, I had the heading on the report wrong. But they're, they're all four dead. They've been dead for a long time. And, and they, they've been, they've been dead for a long time and and there, there's screening there already. You can see from the picture. So I'm asking maybe not to have a reforestation plan for these or a bond.
Okay, before, is that your report on that?
Yes.
Thank you. So before I take questions, let me ask the town manager. So, and maybe you can explain this a little bit. When, when this type of request is made, what is the notice given to the neighbors? And is that a problem because of that error that Dr. Feather described?
So the, the application still requires notice of the neighbors. So all of the neighbors would have known. It's more that the announced agenda to the rest of the town was incorrect.
So the neighbors at the correct address?
That's right.
So I just wanted to make sure the council understood that. Okay, thank you. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
Well, first, a procedural question. Are we going to be discussing each tree removal permit independently? Or if I have questions about other tree removal stuff?
No, we're just, right now, we're just on the one item.
This one.
For Essex. Essex Street.
Tolbert, can you explain why you're not recommending any sort of reforestation? I mean, I read that there's existing screening, but in terms of trees for the town, I'm just a little confused.
Okay, they're, they're Leland, first of all, they're Leland Cypress. The largest one's eight inches, I think, and they're kind of tucked back in a corner. They've been dead for years. So, I mean, to me, it's like cleaning up a yard at this point because they haven't been there for a long time. So and, you know, we can, you, I mean, you, it's up to the council to require a reforestation. And the, the lot has a lot of canopy trees on it already. It's 4911. It's one of the double lots on Essex. So, and then where the house isn't, it's almost forest. And this is in back, in back of the house, in a small garden in back of the house.
Okay, thank you.
And I didn't, I didn't speak with the residents about this at all. This is just something I came through myself. So I haven't spoken to them.
Thank you.
Is that, is that all your questions, Mr. President?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barr, do you have any questions?
I mean, it, I mean, dead trees have a life in them in the sense of, you know, birds will nest in them, and there are bugs there that would, that will chase after and so on. So they actually do contribute to life in a yard. But you know all that. So the question is, why, why are we taking them down now?
Well, I don't know. I, I, they requested to have them removed, and I, I think they just, maybe they had an argument amongst themselves. I have no idea why they decided to take them down or, you know, how those things go.
There's no particular reason why not to.
You can't, you can't really see them unless you get right up on them either, so.
All right, all right.
Is that?
That's my only question on that one.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Frank, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kumar.
No questions. Thank you, Dr. Feather.
Are there, Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions from a resident or guest?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I move approval of removing the four Cypress trees that are dead without a reforestation plan.
Second, is, I saw Kumar as the second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. The next item is public hearing motion to consider approval of the removal of the following public trees as recommended by the town arborist. 4710 Essex Avenue, a pin oak. 4716 Essex Avenue, a pin oak. 4815 Fallstone Avenue, a red maple. 4707 Trent Court, a flowering cherry. 5404 Trent Street, a flowering cherry. Dr. Feather.
Okay, the, the Essex trees are both pin oaks. 4710 did not, half the tree didn't leaf out this, this spring. And also with 4716. 4710, we haven't been really pruning that much on, but 4716, I've been taking large dead branches out for the past two years. So both of these are like 50% canopy. They're losing large limbs. They're not going to revive, you know, back to where they once were. And, and they also become hazardous as they decline like that. So that's the case for those two. It's just time to take those down and start over. The red maple at 4815, during one of the windstorms, a large branch broke out of it and ripped out half of the trunk. So then that made that tree hazardous just because of the weakness of the main trunk. 4707 Trent Court is a tree at the end. It's a flowering cherry, and I've been watching that for years. The, the main branches on it are, are decayed. And it's getting to a point now where it's hollow, and they park cars underneath that tree. So that's become a hazard because those branches are going to fail. The tree's still alive, though. At 5404 Trent, that tree's a small tree we planted, I think, two years ago, and it, it just never, never made it. And it, it's finally dead, so we need to take that out.
Is that, does that conclude your report?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
Yes, Tolbert, thank you very much. I don't have any question about these recommendations, but I do have a question about some trees that have fallen in the stream behind Dorset that, you know, wanders down past the town pool. Have you had a chance to look at them, evaluate whether or not they need to be removed?
Is this recently? Because there were some last fall that I've looked at, but this is.
Yes, these are within the last. Yes, these are within the last month?
Yeah, I'll take a look at those. And then the only reason we would cut them up is if they're going to be in obstruction to the water flow.
And apparently at least one of them is.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take, we've done that before and we can take care of that and just put the wood to the side in the woods.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I mean, this is, it's around the one at 4710, but it's more general, which is that there was new construction at 4710 a couple of years ago. Is there a tendency for trees, when there's been new construction, to die in the next year or two after the construction? In other words, are we protecting the roots enough during the construction?
Well, I, I, I think this is something else, because usually if that happens, they die slowly. This was half of the, half of the tree didn't, didn't leaf out at all. So usually with its construction damage, you'll see it dying slowly over, over several years. This is rather sudden. So this is almost like we, you know, not so much in Somerset, but in other surrounding communities, we've lost mature, a lot of mature white oak trees. And, and, and what the thinking is now is just all the moisture we've been having the past three or four years. 2018 was a record year ever recorded. And then now we're getting the delusions that are four and five inches instead of two inches. So the thinking is among experts now is maybe the soil's changed and it's not draining water as fast and it's killing roots. So that's part of the thought on this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Frank, do you have any questions?
Yes, in line with Councilmember Circa's questions, there's also a tree that is closer to Wisconsin Avenue. There's two houses that are on Dorset that is blocking the stream now. So.
Oh, okay. I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and walk the whole stream.
Thank you.
And then, and then we'll make sure that Matt sends everybody an update
Yes.
on, on that in a timely, in a timely way. Thank you. Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
Yeah. Hi, Dr. Feather. Do we have plans to plant some more trees in the place where these trees are?
Yes, of course. And then both of these, I think, are on the non-wire side. So there'll be canopy trees. It'll be large trees.
Thank you.
And that'll be in the fall. We'll have to stump out and replant in the fall.
Do you want to explain how that process works, Dr. Feather?
Yeah, the, the PNRC reviews recommendations I make, and I take recommendations from them as well. And also, we take resident requests and come up with a list each fall and each spring and have that approved by the council and then have the trees planted. And then they, the town staff has been taking care of the watering, you know, for the first year afterwards. So.
Do you have any other questions, Councilmember Heller?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kumar.
Thank you, Mayor Slaven. Thank you again, Dr. Feather. I also have the same question Councilmember Heller had. I have another question. Are, this is in the right of way. Are residents, you know, at these addresses alerted to the fact that these trees will be taken down? Or what is our standard process for alerting residents that these trees will be taken down?
I, I think it's posted in the journal. It's also on the, I mean, the meeting minutes too. So, and I don't know, Linda, do you notify them as well or no, each one?
Yes, we do send out notices that they are to be removed.
So, Councilor Kumar, that's a very good question, because these, this is an area that needs some review and a resident, remember everyone, when Steve on Essex came to a meeting about 18 months ago? And I've, Steve.
Friedman.
Friedman.
Friedman, yeah. Steve Friedman, who's on our Public Safety Committee, actually. So he came to a meeting about 18 months ago and had a lot of valid concerns about notice and, and information. And so I definitely think that this is a topic that the council needs to review. And, and, and we tighten up the, the policies, because it's, it's not really clear. And, and a lot of questions have been raised, because there, there's been requests to put information, and this is nobody's fault, and I'm glad it's been brought up. There have been requests to put more information in the, in the, in the journal before and after the tree is taken down. There, there's requests regarding when the notice is to be put up about the tree taken down once it's approved, all, all these things. So I'm glad you brought that up and we will put that on our agenda to discuss with your president.
That sounds great. I just, a quick follow up, if I may. Mayor Slaven, Linda, a request to, to the town staff, to Linda, if you're alerting residents, perhaps give them a few days, you know, ahead of time to know that this is going to happen. You know, my request would be five to seven days. Just let them know that this is going to happen.
But there's also, that's a good idea, but there's also the question which you all need to decide of, like where the notice should be placed, when, all these things.
I agree. I appreciate the broader, but for just this particular item and this just this request.
I think that the, the staff does a really good job without having really any real direction. So that's, that's been on the list. So we'll, we'll make sure. Did you have any other questions, Councilmember Kumar?
Thank you. Thank you, Linda, and thank you, Dr. Feather.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager, are there any, is there any resident or guest who desires to speak on this topic? Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I move that we approve the removal of the public trees at 4710 Essex, 4716 Essex, 4815 Fallstone, 4707 Trent, and 5404 Trent, as recommended by the town arborist.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I think I saw Barr first. We'll have to coordinate the second business at the work, at the work session. Okay, is there discussion? Hearing none.
I, I have, I do have one request. Maybe the motion can say with sufficient due notice to residents. Or, or maybe that's implied.
That could just be in the, that could just be understood in the discussion.
Fine, fine.
We will make sure if this passes that that is done.
Thank you.
Then we will work, and then we will work on the.
The broader, the broader, why not? Yeah, thank you.
Okay, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Hi.
All of us opposed. Thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to consider a revised memorandum of understanding with Sarah Keel, a member of the Montgomery County Beekeepers Association, to maintain an apiary in Vincent Park. And also in this motion would be the approval of, which we failed to put in the agenda, the approval of an insurance policy. And with that, I will turn it over to the town manager.
Yes, so I believe I put sort of a primer in, in the packet for you all, but we have an updated version of the MOU, which was verbally agreed to by Ms. Keel and is copied for, for your consideration as well. After approval of the MOU at the April meeting, initially, Ms. Keel had some, some reservations about certain provisions. And so we went back and began new discussions. The council at the May meeting, I, I think felt a little bit rushed, particularly about the insurance aspect of the proposal, and so decided not to act on it at that time. In terms of the insurance, I had reached out to the local government insurance trust, which provides the town's insurance policies and actually provides insurance for, for most all municipalities in the state of Maryland. They indicated that although the town was covered under our general liabilities, that there were certain certain precautions that the town should take to ensure that the town was not, couldn't be found negligent, such as putting up signage that warned people about the apiary and requiring people to sign a waiver. And those, those were kind of the two main, main things that they had suggested. And then in addition to that, they said that the beekeeping itself, so the beekeeper was not covered. So a volunteer for the town was not covered under the town's general liability policies. And so they had recommended this other company, Bee Ensure, which had specifically formed a consortium throughout the country to provide special group policies for beekeepers throughout the country for bee, specifically for beekeeping activities. And so the cost for that to the town is about $350. They have not finalized the, the proposal for the town, so they couldn't provide a specific premium amount, but that was, that was the range that they, that they, that they estimated for it. And that would provide a million dollars per occurrence and $2 million aggregate, excuse me, aggregate for, for the beekeeper. So for, in this instance, Ms. Keel. The town also has a general liability coverage, which is $1 million per occurrence and $3 million aggregate. And the town also carries excess general liability coverage for $5 million. One of the, one of the requests from Ms. Keel was that the town pick up her insurance policy because she's volunteering her services to the town. That sort of covers the gist of it, I think, but I'm, I'm happy to answer.
That's good. Let me, let me just add a few things. Thank you, Matt, for that report and also for the, your comprehensive memo to the council on this. And let's not forget also that this is a a project that's strongly recommended by the Environment Committee. And, and I've met and spoken to Sarah Keel a number of, a number of times, and she's really lovely. She's really wants to educate residents on, on, on this important issue, bees. She, as you, as I've explained before, you know, she's a, she's a full-time nurse and, and it's, and she's had some, she's been under the weather a little bit over the last month. And the, so the memorandum of understanding, which is before you, she is basically okay with it. She would like her advisor, which is her husband, to have the opportunity to review it one more time and speak with the town attorney. So what I'm recommending is that the council approve this with leave for the town manager and the town attorney to perform a final review of the document with Sarah Keel. And she told me, I, I spoke to her over the weekend and she told me that she's, you know, she is still enthusiastic about doing this. She's getting new bees, whatever that means. Maybe Councilor Barr knows more about this. But she's going to get some new bees and more than likely, she would be bringing the bees over here in late June. So with that, I will turn it over to the town attorney to add anything he wants, and then I'll take questions from the council. Mr. Town Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to add other than in the draft that was last approved, we had quoted 2 million, 3 million insurance for a single event in occurrence in, in the aggregate. And so that would just be changed to 1 million and 2 million as Matt's report has reflected is what is available from the insurance provider.
Okay, thank you. Council, President Circa, do you have any questions?
I don't, I don't have any questions. I did want to emphasize that this is a, a very innovative proposal recommended by the Environment Committee. They did a lot of research. And, and it's something very new for the town, for any municipality in this area. And I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Matt, the town manager, and the town lawyer for doing a lot of extra legwork to sort of sort through some of the issues and questions. But I think this looks good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr.
All right, new bees. Quickly, as of how far into the season we are, bees are already active and they're buzzing around our flowers right now, which means that colonies have learned their roots and are following those roots. So that if you try to move a colony at this point, they get totally lost and confused because their roots aren't available to them anymore. But if you bring in new bees, then they have not yet learned any roots, so they can be established in a new place where they then have to learn their roots. And that's what she's doing at this point. So I got no questions.
Could you, could you, so one, one, one of the things she brought up to me that I thought you might like to know, and I think the Councilor Barr can elaborate on, is apparently there is a, there, there aren't enough queen bees this season for some reason. And can you?
I don't, I don't have any information on that. I mean, obviously bees are in great decline and it's probably related to that, but I can't say more than that.
Okay, anyway, it's going to be fascinating for her to educate the town, in my opinion. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Frank, do you have any questions?
No, but I'd like to reiterate a compliment to staff and everyone else for bringing the apiary in. I think it's a fantastic learning opportunity and it'll help pollinate plants throughout the town. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Heller.
I think this is a great project. I just have a few questions. And that is, why, why are we paying for her insurance? And if we do that, does that set a bad precedent for future projects where people come to us and say, well, you pay for our insurance? Um, you know, so that's where I drag my feet on this, is I, I just think it's inappropriate for us to pay for her insurance. With that said, if there is some sort of occurrence where, you know, somebody gets, God forbid, hurt and, you know, the insurance then kicks in, do we stand a chance of trouble or in, or increased rates for ourselves, you know, later on as a town?
Perhaps the town attorney can answer that.
Yeah, so with respect to the first question, why is the town providing the insurance? That was a request of Ms. Keel, because, you know, she, she was approached by the town Environment Committee, as I understand. And so, you know, she's volunteering her time and her, her bees and once in meeting with her, we explained that it is possible, albeit unlikely, for, you know, someone to be injured and then, you know, lawsuits to follow, that, that she didn't want to volunteer her time and then suffer a lawsuit. And so she, she requested that the town pick up an insurance policy for her activities, because she currently does not have a policy. I mean, if litigation ensues, does the town, you know, risk a judgment against itself or an increase in rates? Yes, both things are possible, but again, you know, the risk may be small. I, I can't really, really tell you what the, the level of risk is, although I, I think at the last meeting, it might have been Council President Circa who, who stated, he, he researched and found it very difficult to actually find a, an example of a lawsuit where a plaintiff prevailed and received a money judgment. And, you know, I, I'm not aware of one in, in Maryland. I, I did a little bit of research myself. But, you know, it's, there is a risk. Ms. Keel herself said, you work around bees long enough, you know, eventually you're going to get stung and people around you can get stung. You just, you know, never know when, when it could happen. Also, you know, it's. just never know when when it could happen. Also, you know, it's somewhat of a natural occurrence. And so that will play into litigation. Because, you know, in a negligence action, a plaintiff has to prove several things, you know, including that the harm was foreseeable. Generally, with respect to natural occurrences, you know, there's, there's no liability, like a healthy tree falling, you know, on someone, you know, that's not generally foreseeable. And so the plaintiff is unlikely to prevail in that sort of lawsuit.
Did you did you have any other questions, Councilor Heller?
I just wondered what other members thought, councilmembers thought about paying that we pay for her insurance. That's really my
Well, you'll be able, you'll be able to discuss that once the motion is made. But one thing I would like to say in terms of when you talk about precedent, this is, again, it would be unlikely that we would have found anyone to do this for free. So that's really what we're paying for. We're paying to protect, as Matt put it earlier, we're paying to protect a volunteer. And and I just look at this, I think that's a good question, but I look at this as a as a sort of a different case, because this isn't this isn't a, you know, a for profit business that we're subsidizing in any way. This is a, this is a lovely volunteer beekeeper who really wasn't aware of the risks that she was taking in doing this. And she greatly appreciates, you know, she so much appreciates our willingness, the town's willingness to do this. And to, I think, one of the things the Environment Committee wanted to do was to set the standard for other towns, because it's such an important aspect of the
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kumar, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor Slavin. Yes, I have questions. I have questions on both the MOU and the memo. And I can direct them to both the town manager and the town attorney. If that's okay.
Sure. That's that's why it's it's the purpose of it.
Excellent. In the MOU, Matt, you say the updated MOU indicates that only under extreme circumstances would the town have that right. Can you enumerate for the council? What is the definition of extreme circumstances?
Sure. And Ron might be able to speak to this as well. This is this was something we sort of went back and forth on a lot. And I think that the issue was that in most contracts, and how we had originally done it was to say, the town has the right to remove it if if the town wants to. And Sarah explained that just how heavy the boxes are with the bees, the disruption it would cause to the colonies, that it really wasn't realistic to move them. But we wanted to make sure, but she won't, she wanted to make sure that there was good faith that we wouldn't just decide, we don't, we changed our mind, we don't want to do it. And so the town wanted to protect in case there was some injury to person, that the town retained some ability to remove it in an emergency case such as that, but that over the regular course of the beekeeping activities that the town couldn't just change its mind, essentially. I don't know if that answers your question, or Ron might be able to.
Partially, partially.
I can add add to what Matt said. So this agreement is in the form of a license that provides the right of a private party to use town property. Another example is the BLM library. And in these types of licenses, we typically say, the town has the right to revoke it when the town thinks it's necessary to revoke for one reason or another. And Ms. Keel explained, as Matt noted, that, you know, if the apiaries are were to be removed at a bad time of the season or at a time that's detrimental to the bees, you know, it could wipe out the colony. And also, the apiaries are very heavy and difficult to move. And so the agreement that was negotiated with council input was that we would grant a pilot license for one year and only remove in the event of a serious emergency. And that's defined in the agreement as death or serious bodily harm.
So just to clarify, the, you know, Councilmember Frank has taken me a couple of times to location the apiary. It is two about roughly 200 feet from nearby houses and about 400 feet from Wisconsin Avenue if there is an increase in incidence of bee stings in the area. And there are complaints that come to the town hall that would not fit the definition of extreme circumstances.
Correct. That's correct. Yeah, unless it was serious bodily harm, you know, if someone had, one of the complaining parties had an allergic reaction that, you know, resulted in bodily harm of a, you know, semi permanent nature, not just that they've stung and been inconvenienced.
Let's say a child, if I if I may, Mayor Slavin, I just I will lose my train of thought. I'm sorry. If so, if there's a child walking a dog back there, there's signage, but happens to be stung by the goes into anaphylactic shock, but it's fine, because I think 80 to 90% of bee stings are localized venom and don't result in anaphylactic shock. But there is the 10%, 15%. Is that a definition of serious bodily harm?
I would say yes.
So I mean, I know the majority of the council, you know, Council President Circa, Councilmember Barr, and Councilmember Frank are very keen on this moving forward, including the mayor. But I wanted to flag that it seems that there still is a gap in the definition where there might be cases where residents are harmed and we are not in a position to remove the apiaries. So I just wanted to flag that, and we can bring it up in discussion. Go ahead. I still have questions, by the way, if I may.
Just
But you can go ahead. Yeah.
That's totally true. And but I do want to say that I think she's flexible enough so that, and this is something that, you know, like I said, this needs to be recommended with leave to for the town attorney to negotiate the final document. And and
Can I finally establish some more facts?
Hold on a second. All I want to say to you before you ask, because these are all good questions, that I think she is flexible enough that if there were a lot of bees, bee stings and not, you know, deaths, that we could go to her and say, okay, this isn't working out. And then she would say, okay, if you pay to move the bees, I'll cancel the contract.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
I think
Your word means a lot.
Because that that's a very, that's a very good point. And, you know, like I said, this is all new to her, and she's not a for profit company.
No. And as Council President Circa said, this is innovative. I deal with a lot of innovation, and I know there's a lot of uncertainty. I'm just trying to think of the worst
I understand. I understand. That's a good question. Okay, so keep asking questions.
Okay, so one
These are your chances to talk to Matt. This is your opportunity, as you said, to
I'm losing my train of thought. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, yeah.
As matter. Go ahead.
The other question I had, again, to town attorney and town manager, what does removal mean? Like, for example, can we kill the bees on site if we have an incident? Do we have the ability to take action very quickly and kill the bees? What is the definition of removal? Thank you.
So I think
Yeah.
I don't know that we necessarily worked through that, although we, I think the first the first step would be to physically remove them from the site if possible, before resorting to
Sorry to interrupt. You mean physically pick them up, put them on a truck, take them somewhere else?
That's right. And that was part that was part
And return.
That was
And return.
Yeah. And that was that was part of her concern was that it was so cumbersome to physically pick them up, put them into a truck, and transport them back to her.
But do we have the ability? And is there any reason we might consider actually killing them or eradicating them on site? Would we consider doing that?
So as it's as it's currently written?
I know, I know. I saw Councilmembers flinch. I'm not, I'm just trying to establish the full scope of possibilities. Yeah.
Go ahead. You should ask all these. These are all good questions.
Yeah. So as currently written, if the town wants to revoke the license because there's been death or serious bodily harm, the town would give at least five days written notice to Ms. Keel, and she would have the opportunity to remove them. And if she did not remove them within five days after receiving that notice, the town can remove them and return them to her. And the the requirement to return them to her, you know, indicates that there's going to be a good faith attempt to, you know, return them in a good condition and to keep the bees alive if possible.
Got it. Got it. And then related to that, I'm assuming the answer to this is no, but I just want to ask, ask again to establish facts. Have we determined the cost of removal? So in a in a case when something goes, you know, wrong, we don't want that to happen. We don't hope, we hope that won't happen, but things can go wrong. Is have we estimated the cost of removal and the process of removal?
I don't believe so. No. Matt, maybe.
Matt?
No, I don't. I don't have a good estimate.
No, that wasn't, that wasn't. But perhaps that you'll want to make that as an issue that is discussed with her.
Okay. And then you said that LGIT said that they cannot insure this, correct? Matt? That they cannot provide insurance for a volunteer because that person is not is not part of the permanent staff of
That's that's right. They did not want to insure. Yeah, yes.
But are they, is that, would they, is it the activity or the person that they did not want to insure? Is it the employment status of the person that was driving the insurance? Or was the activity driving the refusal of insurance? Because you have two paragraphs here that suggest two different things.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
The other suggests that LGIT has never, you know, underwritten beekeeping activities, and Somerset would be the first. So what is the reason for LGIT saying no to us exactly?
It's it's really both. They don't, they don't want to cover anybody who is undertaking beekeeping activities. The town is covered under our general liability for holding a bee apiary on site. But we are not covered. That's why Sarah, as an individual, would be required to get the beekeeping.
No, I appreciate that. I'm just asking you why they said no. So they said no for both reasons. And for the second reason, what was the reason? What? How do they explain that reason? The second reason being the activity that they don't want to cover, not the person, not the volunteer?
Yeah, that had to do with the fact that Legit is a pooled risk insurance for all municipalities throughout Maryland. And so they didn't feel comfortable extending insurance coverage for an activity that none of their other members are doing, in which they didn't, they didn't feel like they had done enough research to 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 effectively underwrite the activity.
Okay. And last two questions, Mayor Slavin and councilmembers. Thank you for your patience. This is, I don't have the full picture on this. The the beekeepers insurance program, this is something you have researched, you have given us some details in the memo, but this is not, we don't have the final numbers or the final proposals from this insurance program. Is that correct?
Correct.
Do when do you expect to get that?
Well, I'm not sure. I followed up with them a couple of times and sent in an application. I suspect it's not that complicated because we are also, we're not selling product or, you know, some of the other things that are typically covered is having a booth at a farmer's market, for example. But I've reached out to them a couple of times over the past couple of months and or past month, rather. And unfortunately, I haven't, they haven't finalized the application.
Got it. No problem. And and having that town attorney bold, having that is part of finalizing the MOU, if I'm not mistaken. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And last, last question. Sorry, I'm trying to find my notes here. In the in the MOU, it says the licensee will install and maintain prominent signage at the town hall and on the apiary area fencing to provide warnings about bee stings. Who will pay for
Matt, you can answer that.
Sure. I think the cost of the signage was small enough that the town was going to cover it. I think we got an estimate, and it was something like 65 bucks.
Okay, great. Those are all my questions. Thank you, Mayor Slavin.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to speak on this topic?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
Before I do, Mr. Mayor, I thought that Debbie had some questions about the insurance that maybe we could just sort of discuss as a group. Is that correct, Debbie?
Go for it. You're muted, councilmember. Oh, I think, why don't you unmute everybody, Matt?
I think it was just a general concern for our future, that if we pay for this insurance, might we be on the hook to pay for others? And I understand, you know, now with this complete discussion, I really understand why, you know, we're going to, we're offering to pay for this insurance. This is seems like a special circumstance. I just don't want to put us in a precedent setting situation that we feel we always have to do this. And I just actually just wanted to throw it to the council. I don't want to make a big thing out of it. Just a, you know, FYI kind of what I'm thinking.
Thank you. I think that's a good point. I think it's something we should be conscious of is precedence with any decision we're looking at.
My initial reaction was, wait a moment, if we're ensuring her, is that also ensuring her for the other bees that she keeps elsewhere? Does that lead to complications? On the other hand, where I see this as distinctive is that we approached her rather than they approached us. So in other words, we, she is doing us a service. To some extent, that's some responsibility on our part then to cover her, given it is our approach.
I get I get that, Robin. And I think that's fair.
And I guess the other perspective I got, I guess, after talking a little bit with Matt and Jeffrey, is that the insurance will be paying for for the beekeeper in effect is insurance for residents of Somerset. Because if something unfortunate happened, which doesn't seem to happen anywhere in the US in the research I did, but if something happened, an individual, the town would be protected. But if, let's say, there is negligence or perceived negligence on the part of the beekeeper, and an individual resident sued the beekeeper, and the beekeeper didn't have insurance, well, then the resident could be left without any coverage or support, without any real recourse or no easy recourse. So it just seemed to be a prudent way to proceed.
I get it. I understand that.
Steve, did, I don't know if this is the right time to ask questions, but Steve.
Right now, you're discussing before someone makes a motion.
Steve, did the Environmental Committee look into all of these scenarios? Or, you know, you said they did a, I made a note here that they did a thorough research, and they made the proposal. Unfortunately, you know, I've not seen that or what was involved in that. Did they look at all of these scenarios when they made the recommendation? And I have a related question. We say pilot study. What exactly are we piloting? Are we piloting the breeding of these bees on our grounds? Or is this a stepping stone to other projects and initiatives? I feel I've had a conversation about that in the past, but we worthwhile sort of tabling that since we keep saying pilot. I feel I've had a conversation about that in the past, but I'm, we work while sort of tabling that since we keep saying pilot. Um, I'm wondering what it would lead to.
Great question. So, so you, you have two questions. Uh, I'll, I'll talk for the second one first about the pilot. So it's a pilot strictly for the apiary program in Somerset. So the idea is we'll set this up for one year. And if at, at the end of a year or shortly before the end of the year, uh, the town wants to continue doing it and the beekeeper wants to continue doing it, then we can go into a longer term arrangement. Um, and if we don't, then we just don't agree to continue. It just, we, we, we part our ways and she'll take everything away.
I see. I see. So it's a time bound for that year. And if you want to do, if it works out all well, you'll carry on. That's what you mean. Okay.
Yeah. And, and the council would, would vote in a year from now on whether or not to continue it. Um, and I can't recall the details off the top of my head, but it might be to continue it for three years or for five years as opposed to year by year.
Year by year, but okay.
Um, with regards to the, the first question about how much had the environment committee considered? I, I'm not sure they understood all of these legal and insurance issues. I think that they're really focused on the good for the town and the good for the Montgomery County by, by es- establishing this pilot program. So we've all learned a little bit more as we've dug into it.
That's the benefit of piloting. Uh, a quick follow-up, uh, question there. You know, we've been talking about the risk to the town and I appreciate Debbie's questions. But if we do have an incident, where this policy comes into play, I think we would have a crisis of government. You know, we would be in a, in a different territory if someone is harmed or hurt because of this initiative. This is, I'm not, I'm not someone who would, you know, would naturally, you know, um, do fear mongering or, or anything along those lines. It's just a genuine concern I have that if a child is somehow harmed, i- i- because we, this is new uncharted territory for us. It, it is a worthwhile cause. I, I appreciate and respect all your passion for it. That we may protect ourselves potentially, but there will be someone who's harmed. And that leaves me, you know, with serious concerns.
Kevier, Kevier, I brought up at the May meeting, consider the pool. And everything.
It's dangerous.
Said just now about beekeeping is true, multifold of the pool. Um, we would be very exposed if a kid gets harmed or injured or drowned at the pool.
That's a great point. I'm so glad you brought that up because what do we have at the pool to mitigate that? That we pay for it? Well, beyond the insurance laws. Anyone want to take a guess? Well, it's employment, it's employment for, for the youth. It's, you know, it's, we staff the pool with lifeguards. There are two lifeguards. There's constant monitoring of kids' activities because pools are dangerous. They do kill children. Children do drown and we have lifeguards in place because we are constantly monitoring to mitigate that risk. You know, so that we don't even get to a point where we need to invoke our insurance work. That is, in my view.
So are you saying that there is no risk?
No, I'm saying there is a risk with, with pools and we take actions to mitigate that risk.
Right. But I'm saying even with the actions to mitigate the risk, are you now saying there is no risk at the pool?
No, no, I, I, I don't. But that, that would be an intellectual exercise, right? We are doing everything.
Oh, no, just a sec. So if we're.
When we put, let me finish my thought. If we put lifeguards in place, we are doing everything we can.
Right.
To mitigate the risk. And that's my intent here, by the way. I'm not, my intent here is to do everything we can to mitigate the risk.
Haven't we just said that we're putting notices up to warn kids? We, we've got, they've got to sign a memorandum of understanding so they're aware. Isn't that the equivalent actions to mitigate the risk in this situation?
They seem woefully insufficient from my perspective. And I am happy to be wrong. That's what I'm trying to tell you. I don't know enough either. But that, you know, they seem, and maybe this is a, just a reflection of the innovative nature of this, that there are concerns and risks, you know. And as I said, I'm familiar with taking innovation people.
They're crossing the road and we look both ways to mitigate the risk. Yes, it's true.
You know, I don't feel like we're being negligent here on this bee thing. You know, and I, I, um, I think we need to move forward because we could debate this all night. But, you know, yeah, things could happen. We could get stung. I'm not going to go near that. Okay?
You're not going to go near that?
No, because I'm afraid of bees. Okay? I'm going to read the signs. If that's where they are, I'm going to go somewhere else. But.
So we are actually creating something where town residents will stay away from.
Right. And that's fine. I'm a Freddy cat, you know? But, but I think it's great for other people. It's great for them. It's just not good for me. And that, and I, you know.
I believe you're not, I believe you're not alone. I think there are many residents and children in town who would share that sentiment. I would like them, I would love to allay their fears. You know, I would love for us to move forward allaying their fears, but they, they do exist. And so, and what strikes me a bit noteworthy in this discussion is we are talking about how we can protect ourselves if something goes wrong. But when something goes wrong, someone has been harmed and likely a resident of this town. And I'm uncomfortable with that decision. Now, I'm a minority vote here. If you decide to move forward, you will move forward. But I just wanted to raise that for all of you to, to consider. And um, either way, this is an incomplete proposal. The insurance policy is not finalized. Without the insurance policy being finalized, the MOU is not finalized. So that is a procedural concern I have.
No, except tonight you can, you can approve it.
I would not do that in any con, any issue in, in general, you know, and, and this being so, so tricky.
It can be approved on the, on the, as the, as the town attorney could suggest. It can be approved on the condition that such and certain insurance is obtained.
I, I understand that. I understand that. I understand that. But I would love to see it all. Um, from my perspective. Again, I know I'm a minority vote and I accept that. But I, you know, on both the fact that this is not a complete package and more importantly, that there are real risks here that I don't think have been fully sought out. And this is part of why we do interesting innovative things is we try to figure them out. And we, we overcome them. And I would love to figure out a way to overcome.
Well, perhaps, so perhaps you will be able to amend the motion to allay some of your concerns. So with that.
That's a tall order for me. So, sorry. As a newbie, that would be hard for me to engineer.
So first of all, I'm very impressed with how well-prepared all the council members are, particularly the new ones. And your excellent questions. So on this topic, are you, is any council member prepared to make a motion?
I'll give it a try. I recommend that the council approve a revised memorandum of understanding with Sarah Keel, a member of the Montgomery County Beekeepers Association, to maintain an apiary in Vinton Park that we, that the um, insurance for the beekeeper that is an integral part of the memorandum of understanding be approved in the, in an amount not to exceed five hundred dollars. And that we authorize the town attorney and town manager to make minor modifications in the memorandum of understanding as necessary to complete the arrangement.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Town Attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there discussion?
My proposal to my fellow council members is that we look at this package when it's fully finalized. We can do it in an emergency meeting or, or off-schedule meeting. It would be beneficial to have it fully finalized, finalize, look at all the facts when the insurance policy is drafted and the MOU is complete. And we didn't address the questions I raised about, you know, harm and the, you know, gaps that exist and when things go wrong, when it's not a serious consequence. Um, you know, I don't know if that language needs to be amended um, to, to reflect that. So I, I would be a lot more comfortable if all of those pieces were addressed and we had a full package personally um, to approve this, to be honest with you.
Well, let me try to, to raise a couple of points there. And one is it, we are only giving a one-year license here and obviously minor stare increase in stakes, minor things, I presume the council will take that into account and whether we decide to go ahead with the license. So I think that that kind of minor event does have an effect on us and will probably result in our not renewing the contract. Um, and I think we all have to decide on whether there is greater risk at this point um, of, of harmful bee stings with this hive than any other risk in town. And I, obviously the, the standard that I'm applying is the pool. Uh, and I confess that I did, with Kevier, I think there's a greater risk of the pool even with the lifeguards. And it's just a matter of opinion, you know, that I, who sees bees as a greater risk, I see drowning as a greater.
I'm happy to discuss shutting down the pool if you believe it's a risk. We are discussing a new project. We are introducing, we are, no, no, I'm really, I'm happy to do that. But we are discussing a new project where we are introducing risks. And the point.
Right now you're discussing, right now you're discussing the motion.
The motion, exactly. Sorry. That, that would lead to a project that will likely introduce new risk. And I want to be clear. I'm not, I'm saying I want to sort out and address those and be thoughtful about it. That's why I asked the question, did the environmental committee look at that? That's all I'm saying. At the highest level, that's, that's the point I'm making, is that let's do it systematically mitigated. Because we can cover ourselves as government, but if someone is harmed, there is no turning back from that.
I, I don't think I could say more. I think that this, one other point though is that um, we're already into the season and introducing further delay in planting the beehives basically means we're going to be out of the season if we're not careful. So the idea, I think, is best is to allow it to be finished quickly without her coming back again. And that's why I would, I would like to see that happen.
So this is the beauty of democracy. There's a motion on the table. There's debate, pro and con. And if there is, is there further discussion?
No, but I, I respect your views, Robin. I hope, I hope I wasn't too belligerent. So I just want to say that. But I, I do want to express my views clearly for the record. And that's why I, 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 you know.
Well, I think it's good that you have, I think it's good that you have made your case because the way the motion is crafted, the town attorney and the town manager will have the opportunity to try to address those when they are coming up with the final document. Isn't that correct, Mr. Town Attorney?
Well, we could certainly add to the definition of emergency, but.
Well, that isn't in the motion, but that you can try to.
Right, yes.
The way, I think the, the way, I think the way that the council president crafted the motion gives you the opportunity to clarify some of these outstanding issues. Because we don't know what questions she's going to ask. She wasn't, she wasn't able to be here tonight. And again, this person is not, this, a- as, as someone pointed out, this was the, the initiative of a town committee. This was not an individual trying to force a pro.
I, I agree.
She believes in the, she believes in.
I appreciate that a lot. I just want to be clear.
So, and I think that to, I think that your concerns, Kev or Kevier, are totally valid. But I do think that even though there's this legal document, I do think there will, if there is a problem, I don't think it will become a crisis because I think that the beekeeper is flexible and will respond to any problems. And that's, that's uh, how I feel when I've been, you know, talking with her.
By the way, uh, uh, to council members Barr and Zerco, did the environmental committee conduct the kinds of hearings the stormwater committee has done, which I consider a gold standard for committees?
Yeah, no, no, no.
No, they do. I'm just reflecting on council member Heller's partially joking comment that she would stay away.
They did not.
I wasn't joking.
You were not. Okay. Well, okay. Well, then even more serious.
If it makes you feel better, I don't plan to go over there either.
You don't plan to go there either. Okay.
With that, is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, thank you. That was, that was excellent uh, democracy, as I said. Uh, the next item, uh, discussion motion to approve, to consider approval of mayor's testimony in support of recommended changes to the county's Thrive 2050 Plan, Mr. Town Manager.
Sure. So um, you all saw, I, I kind of tried to bring you up to speed a little bit on this whole process with the Thrive 2050, which is the county's uh, plan, uh, long-term development plan essentially for Montgomery County. And one of the proposals that has sort of got baked into it after some discussion from, I think primarily council members Juwondo and um, was it Bremer, uh, Mayor Slavin? Do you know who, who, who are the two that sort of?
Bremer is the other one, yeah.
So they, they, they had, they had proposed um, some legis, some legislation of their own um, to basically uh, promote development around um, around metro stations in Montgomery County. And after some discussion and feedback from, from various folks, they sort of baked this into the, the overall Thrive 2050 Plan. And so uh, some of the nearby municipalities have had some meetings with representatives from, from, from the various municipalities to respond to it. Um, and I've outlined some of the, some of the um, asks that they've put forward. And they have asked Mayor Slavin to speak um, at that. And Mayor Slavin has signed up to speak before the, the county council and to coordinate with the mayor of the town of Chevy Chase, Barney Rush, um, to get some of these points across. And so as I laid out to you, Mayor Slavin has signed up. Um, if the council votes to approve of, of this uh, testimony, Mayor Slavin would be able to say that he's speaking on behalf of the town of Somerset. If he elected not to, uh, he would say that he's doing it on his own behalf. But um, I think that's sort of the gist of it. Robin, uh, excuse me, council member Barr has also been involved in these discussions, so he may have something to add. And uh, of course, Mayor Slavin as well.
Okay. So before I, I run through the, the council, let me just say that of course this is a very complicated issue. And uh, lots of different groups have been uh, working on it since the uh, Thrive 2050 Plan was um, issued. And all, to, to really simplify this is what, what this uh, testimony that I'm going to be uh, presenting along with others is, so, so uh, a coalition, which, what's it called? The Thrive 2050 Co- anyway, there's a coalition of community groups and municipalities around here that's come up with um, a position on this plan. And I'm going to be testifying in support of this position. And the, the, the issue tonight is whether, as a group, you want to endorse this position or not. And I'm not, and this was um, uh, council, former council president Schalls, this was her baby really. And so I'm not trying to ram anything down on you. I'm just, I just wanted to make sure that you have the opportunity as a council to jointly endorse this position. And if you don't want to as a group, that's fine. If you want, if some of you want to sign on individually, that's also fine. So we'll leave it at that because it's very complicated. And I respect, I respect everybody's view on it, individual view. And with that, I will ask Council President Zerco if he has any questions.
No, no, no questions, uh, Mr. Mayor. Just, but I do want to make a couple of brief comments.
Um, please do.
And and thank you for volunteering to to speak and represent the town. The draft letter that the community has put together, section three, has a very oddly written sentence in it that if it's not too late, I think should be rewritten. The sentence is residents are skeptical that construction of more housing types in single-family neighborhoods will not achieve the draft plan stated goals. It's like a double negative. I don't think that's what's intended. I think residents are skeptical that construction will achieve the draft plan stated goals.
You know, that was drafted by so many people. And I think it's like, I think at this point, it's like taken a day. I don't think we have the opportunity to correct that. So so if if that is objectionable to you, then I think you're gonna have to vote not to support, you know, it's. Do you have any other questions or comments you wanted to make?
The other comment I want to make is, and it's noted here in the letter, that many residents are open or supportive of some or many of the Thrive objectives and plans. I think it's a very important vision. But I support the position that there are issues of the way things have proceeded to date. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Barr. Do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. First of all, stay away from the friendship heights coalitions language. It's inflammatory and not useful in the debate. The comments you have are useful and I think will be helpful. But I do want to point out the compatibility problem and why it was probably dropped and realize that it is a minefield. What the community is saying is compatibility means apply the local codes to the new construction. That's what they're saying. And the local codes create problems for the builders. And you will see that also in the discussion. The builders are not interested in building if the local codes are followed to the letter. And the reason for that is how they interact. If you've got even two homes on a lot like a duplex, you suddenly have more cars. But the local codes will limit you to two cars. And so the builders then are going, what can I do under those circumstances? Well, I know I can do an underground garage, but if I do an underground garage with your height restriction, I can't build this big a house. And if I can't build this big a house, people want not going to want to buy it at the price I have to make for it in order to cover my cost of construction. And that's why the builders aren't interested in it. So unless we have some kind of exception to the local codes, the builders are not going to go there. And that's why residents are saying we're not going to get any interest in it because the builders aren't going to go there. If you change the the language to close compatibility or near compatibility, then you create the opening whereby some exceptions can be allowed to allow builders to make a profit on these duplexes or townhomes or whatever. And that's what I'm asking that you do.
So, you know, as I said before, I respect everybody's view. I don't necessarily agree with everything that's contained in this position. And it's it's totally a political thing. So all I the reason this is on the agenda tonight is because the coalition requested support from the council as a whole. And if you decide that you don't want to jointly support this, then I would encourage you to send in your own testimony with your own view because you're all elected officials. And the county council members will give extra consideration to what you're saying. So for example, you, Councilmember Barr, you you have followed this very closely. You have very well-educated views on this topic, and I highly recommend that you write your own letter. The the rules are in terms of testifying is only one person from each municipality is given, you know, hearing space. But that doesn't mean you can't write a, that doesn't mean that you can't send a letter.
What I'm trying to do this evening is to make you sure you're aware of the issue around compatibility.
I I understand all that. I've just made the political decision to support this.
I understand that.
So that's so, and I respect you, and I'm sure I agree with you on that particular issue. Do you have any other questions or comments?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Frank.
You unmute.
You're muted.
Jack, you unmute.
You're muted, Jack.
I thought the whole thing was not well-written. And in the first sentence, it used the word prescribed, which basically means prohibited. And it sounded like that first sentence sort of trying to say it was prescribed. It was what was proposed. I mean, Mr. Mayor, just go through the language and make sure that the words are making sense to you because some of them, to me, were confusing and contradictory. And you do an excellent job of speaking, so don't just read what they said. Give your own testimony.
I've already committed to the coalition. We're doing joint, we're doing, we're all taking different parts, I think.
Just make sure the words are accurate and not misinterpreted.
Based on what you're saying, I would recommend that you vote against signing on to this. But anyway, did you have any other questions?
No, I trust you. I guess it's the bottom line, so.
Okay. Well, I trust you more than you trust me. Okay, Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
No, just a comment. Thanks for thanks for testifying, Jeffrey. This is a really important issue that I'm really trying to understand. I'm trying to do a deeper dive here. You know, I'm really pretty new at this, but thank you. I go get them.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kumar.
I'm also thankful, Mayor Slaven, that you are representing us. I I appreciate that this is a political call. It's probably not wise to break ranks with with the coalition. But in at the same time, I would, you know, we do need collectively as a council, I think, to come up with a position. And I think we do need to engage the town soon on it. And I think there are divergent voices in town folks that have a different view on the future of this town. So I hope we can find time collectively.
Okay, well, that is a very good point because the they're going to be, I think, three hearings over the next month or so. And the council isn't even going to take this up until in the fall at the earliest. And of course, it's all connected to next year's election, too, by the way. So so at an upcoming work session, it's possible that that someone will be interested in fashioning a joint position specifically for your council, for this council.
So Council President Zerko to consider.
So so when we when we meet with him and and.
We'd all be doing it.
Yeah, so. Okay, but thank you for raising that. And with that, Mr. Town Manager, does any resident or guest wish to speak on this topic?
Yes, Lucy Freeman has joined us and has raised her hand.
Okay, excellent.
I I'm sorry, I guess I could have read in the packet, the testimony that Jeffrey will give. I am, as I'm Mr. Mayor, but as I'm listening to you, our mayor is not in support of everything he is saying from what he said.
That's correct.
Our council president is has objected to double negative language. Councilmember Frick, Frick has complained about it. I, as I talked to many people in town, many of our residents in town support having duplexes and triplexes in the town. And so suddenly, I think I should have realized you were planning to do this. But I think, are you going to be speaking as yourself or as Mayor of Somerset?
No, I'm speaking as in my individual capacity in support of the call, the.
Yeah, so you will not say I'm mayor of Somerset.
Yes, I will say I'm mayor of Somerset. That's.
Okay, if you say you're mayor of Somerset, then it sounds like the town is supporting you. And it sounds like the council is supporting you.
No, I will make sure that I say that I'm testifying in my individual capacity.
Okay, and would you mention in it that people in the town support duplexes and triplexes?
Well, the the purpose of this agenda item is to for the council to decide whether they want to sign on to the coalition's position. It's not, it's not to bind me to what I'm going to say. And I've already committed to supporting the coalition's joint, you know, position paper.
Okay, so I guess my position is if Mayor Slaven has decided, though he does not approve of parts of this, that he will go along and say this. I'm asking the other council members who have questions about this to not support it because I think many of our residents do not do not support this. And and Mayor Slaven knows very well, this is a huge issue. He's saying it's a political issue, but it's also a social issue. It's a racial issue. It's an issue about all the people in our county and where are they going to live?
So is your, so hold on a second. This isn't this is the time for the resident to testify. This is not a back and forth. So so your position is you are asking the council to sign on to the coalition's position. Is that right?
No, I'm asking the council not to support the coalition and not to support you.
Oh, okay, fine. Okay, thank you.
That's my position.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other residents or guests that wish to speak? Okay, council, you prepared to make a motion? I guess you, I according to our town attorney is I think you have to, since it's on the agenda, you have to vote it up or down. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So will anyone, is anyone would anyone make a motion?
I'm happy to give it a shot.
Okay, go for it.
Okay, motion to consider approval of Mayor's Mayor Slaven's testimony in support of recommended changes to the county's Thrive 2050 Plan. Does that hold? I just read it from the agenda.
Yes, it does.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there discussion?
I I'm not going to support it for the reason that I gave, which is that as it is framed, and if it were to be followed, nothing would change because builders will not build duplexes or triplexes under these circumstances.
Is there further discussion? Go ahead.
I'm gonna, I want to say I'm going to support it. I'm going to support it because, Robin, what I I know I don't know as much as you and and I will learn, I promise. But my understanding is that builders, from what I was reading today, they are going to build at market value. So this is not going to be, the builders might come in here and build a fourplex, but they're going to build expensive fourplexes to that will fit into our our expensive neighborhood. So this is not going to be a so-called affordable housing here. And I think I think we need to support this. I know, and I know we I need to learn more, and I apologize for not knowing enough.
The issue is that because they can't build big enough fourplexes or duplexes because of the restrictions in our municipal codes in our towns around, they won't want to do it. They'll want to build a large, single-family home there because they'll make more profit on the same large, single-family home than on the individual. Remember that land becomes more expensive the more homes you can put on it. So they have to pay more for the land if they're going to put in a fourplex or a duplex than if they're just putting in a single one. So they've got to find a way to make a profit there. And if you've got all our codes in place, there's no chance they can make a profit.
You know, I think I think as Mayor Slaven noted at the top, and this is complex, I appreciate Lucy's comment, and this is a multifaceted issue. I think there are folks in town who would say yes in my in my backyard for these kinds of changes. And and so I really appreciate Lucy, everything you said. My, the question that's on my mind is is just just for sake of discussion, Mayor Slaven, maybe you can educate us. If we let's say you you chose not to support this testimony, you didn't show up, and we all collectively said we are out of this process, is there a political cause to our town? Given the coalition and what the, no. So then, what is the, when you said it's political, what were you saying? What is, if you can help us understand what was on your mind?
Part of the politics of it is that former President Shong was very involved with this coalition. And I I thought she might attend tonight. And so I wish to support all her her efforts.
I see.
Trying to come with the, come up with a compromise. You know, it's it's very hard to come up with a compromise. And and, you know, there are certain aspects that I don't necessarily agree with. I I definitely align myself with our distinguished resident Lucy Freeman on the multiple price point housing issue. But I I've decided that I wish to support this compromise. But there is still, like I said before, I honestly, I think based on what I'm hearing from the five of you, I think that you should not vote support this motion. And I and I think that I love the idea of creating some opportunities for discussion among the residents because I don't think our residents have been properly informed on this issue.
Yeah, the Equity and Inclusion Committee is following it for the half a year recently, so I don't know if they are on it.
So so rather than spend all night on a very complex topic, I would just suggest that you turn this, that vote against the motion that one that Debbie made, I guess.
No, actually Kumar made it.
The Councilmember Kumar.
Kumar made it, right.
And then and then I and I would suggest that the council bring this, bring this up at a work session on how they're going to proceed.
That's a good idea for for the discussion at the work session.
Is there further, is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
I'll vote for it.
All those opposed? And so one in favor, four opposed. Thank you very much. Again, that was excellent democracy. The next item is public hearing motion to authorize the expenditure of up to $90,000 for concrete deck replacement and joint caulking of the Somerset Town Pool Deck in fall 2021. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this was identified last year, I believe, that the basically our pool deck needs replacing. It's the original pool deck, so it's about 40 years old or so. And when American Pool assessed it, they found about a third of it that was in what they said great disrepair, dire need of dire needs of repair. And the other that could wait a few years. And so this proposal from them is to repair the part that they say is in dire need of repair. They recommended they recommended approving it now as soon as possible so that they can begin the permitting process with Montgomery County, which has been slowed down because of COVID and just getting back up to speed because of COVID. And and that that they anticipate then starting the work once the pool closes this fall.
Okay. Thank you. Council President Zerko, do you have any questions?
Yes, please. Thank you, Matt. When would this take place in the fall?
When would this take place in the fall? In, would need, would it need to take place in October or could it wait until November?
Well, that, that is a good question. Um, I don't know the answer to that 100%. Uh, when I talked to them earlier in the spring, they had suggested that, um, starting it in October made the most sense. But, um, my understanding is that the pool committee chair, Matt Zafft, had spoken, uh, spoken with them, and they had said that they could probably squeeze it in in November if we took earlier action on it, just to make sure we got on their schedule. The main, the main issue is getting it down before it gets too cold. Um, and so probably early November won't be, won't be as big an issue. But O- October is, is the more ideal time to do that kind of work. But, um, November's not on there.
Thank you. And the amount, I noticed in the town budget, there's $65,000 in the capital budget for, like, pool renovations or something like that. Is, is that $65,000 to set aside for this?
That's right. We, so the, the, the cost estimate is higher than what we had, had anticipated um, because of the cost of materials going up.
Okay. But in terms of our budget planning, we're only talking about an additional $25,000 as opposed to $90,000.
That, that's right. So it's, it's from that, and then presumably we would take the money from our, our, but, our capital contingency budget for the other $25,000.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council Member Barr.
Yeah, the, obviously the money we're talking about is for the, repairing those sections of the deck that are in dire need of repair. My question is, are we going to be back in two years for the rest of it? Because the deck is, could deteriorate quickly given its age. So should we really do all of it now? That's, that's what it boils down to.
That's a good question. Um, I think that it's probably more cost-effective to do it all at once because you're not paying for, um, you're, you're not paying for the, the company to, to show up two times and to, to do the deliveries two times. However, I think because of our, um, because of our budget situation, that was part of the discussions in our budget talks was that it, it, it makes more sense to space it out so that, um, we didn't dip too, too far into the negatives and could continue on without going into deficits. So that, that was the reason, that was the reasoning behind, um, breaking it up like that. But it's, 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 uh,
Capital budget though, rather than operating budget. And in that sense, it's not really tied closely to fiscal years.
Yes, that's correct.
Is that, did that conclude your questions, Councilman Barr?
That includes, that concludes my questions, Jeff.
Thank you, Councilmember Frank.
Yes, Matt, um, what kind of solicitation did you do for this? Uh, did you go out on the open market for bids?
We have not for this. So, um, in this instance, we got the bid from American Pool to do the capital work on the pool, which is what we've done for parts replacement and things like that in the past. Um, but to your point, this is perhaps a little bit different in nature, so, um.
Well, this is why, this is why we need a procurement policy.
That's where I was going, Jeff, or Mr. Mayor, I agree.
But the one thing I will say, the one thing I'll say, I believe in the recent past, whenever we have gone out to bid on something at the pool, that, that pool management company has always been the lowest bidder, isn't that right, Matt?
Well, yeah, uh, maybe, not necessarily, I, I would say. But, but they, they're always competitively priced. Um, and I, but I, what I would say is that, um, we, we do end up always getting the same companies that end up bidding for it. It's, it's a little bit different than getting your residential pool deck replaced. So you, you're kinda having to go to these commercial pool companies. And so there's, there's three or four of them. Um, and the reason we've usually gone with them and for even the parts replacement is because they're familiar with our pool, they're the ones that see our pool, and, um, probably have the best assessment of, of the needs of our pool. But, and as you, as you, as you noted, uh, it's, it's unusual for us to go out to bid.
So, this is an item that is sort of, um, got caught up in the transition to the, to, to the new council. Because ordinarily, this would have come to a work session before coming to the, to the council. So I guess I should ask Matt whether, is this something that could be deferred until more information is obtained, or is it urgent that it be decided tonight?
Um, I, uh, the council could decide to, to defer it. Uh, I, I would say we should probably aim to at least get it done by July. Um, so I, you know, if you, if you decided you feel more comfortable with me going out to bid, I could reach out to a couple of companies to at least have a couple of options before you. Um, but probably not enough time to have a couple of options before you by the, the work session. Um, so, sort of the,
I just find that information on the table. Councilmember Frank, do you have any other questions?
Just a comment, uh, getting parts from the company, I agree with completely, they know it. But, uh, concrete work is pretty generic, and there are probably lots of companies that have, uh, qualifications in that regard.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Heller.
I'm just wondering, i- in the condition that it's in, is any of this a code violation? That, you know, the county would close us down because our concrete wasn't right or anything? You know?
Not at the moment, um, but there were some smaller fixes that needed to happen. Um, we did some, some spot, uh, spot, uh, quick, quick, quick creed or whatever it's called, the, um, in some of the areas. So it's, it's something that needs immediate action, um, but not causing, you know, it didn't cause us to fail the, fail this year.
Uh, and is that, is that your last question, Councilmember?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, something else I want to point out in terms of, um, the transition is that ordinarily, this topic would also, wherever we discuss an orientation, how that we have the pool committee, which makes recommendations on the rules and regulations and use of the pools. And we also have the pool management team, which is the, the council president, the town manager, and the liaison to the pool committee, right? And so, is that what it is? And so ordinarily, that's the group that deals with making capital recommendations. So that would be another reason. And, and that group, now that we have the new council president, that group will be meeting soon. So perhaps tonight is not, maybe it's too rushed to make this decision tonight.
Yeah, well, I, I would like that group to give, give us their opinion of whether we really should, uh, pay for the whole renovation of the deck because it's more efficient now. Rather than just trying to match.
Hold, hold on, hold on, you'll get a chance. Councilmember Kumar, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor Slavin. Um, Matt, uh, just to clarify, with the current proposal, as is, they are saying they would start work after this, uh, summer season.
That's right, yeah. And they've, and they've indicated that if we extend, if we extend it, that they would work around that.
So effectively, they are saying it's fine for this summer season, but we should fix this before the next season.
Correct.
So we have time from the end of this season to the beginning of next season, including the spring, to do this work.
Yes, um, although concrete work doesn't, doesn't do during winter, so.
Yeah, after, after the winter months, before the summer months, that's also window, I, I don't know, you, you, the rest might have a view on that.
Yeah, I thi- I think that that's, that's probably true as well.
Okay. And then, um, I do share Councilmember, uh, Barr's view that it would be helpful to have sort of the full picture of costs involved in upgrades because they, we, we know they are coming. And that there might be some efficiency gains in trying to look at them in total. Um, and at least, at least we should be aware of that full cost burden, what that looks like.
So, so actually, I, I, I will say that included in the quotes, they did give us the, the, the pricing of doing the rest of it as well, um.
As in rest of it, as in?
So, um, if, if you're able to pull it up, or, or I could even share my screen if that's, if that's easier, um.
Yeah, that'd be great, Matt.
Sure. So what, what we were considering and what, what we had sort of budgeted for, um, was the work that I highlighted here, which is the 80,000 for the deck replacement and the 8,800, give or take, of the, the caulking. But they've also included, if you notice at the top, what the price would be right now to just go ahead and do the rest of the deck, which was about another $155,000. Yeah, and, and, and part of the reason that it's more money than we budgeted for is that the, the costs of these materials, that just always goes up. So, um, so I think certainly as, as, uh, Councilmember Barr noted, there, there, there would almost certainly be efficiencies gained by doing all the work.
And, and just to be clear, none of this, other than the, so what amount is budgeted? I, I think, uh, Council President Circa noted 65K, is that right?
65,000, yes.
So anything above 65 is new money from the capital budget that you will put towards this?
That's right.
Um, that's it, and I appreciate all the other questions that were asked, similar ones on my mind as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager, are there any comments or questions from our residents or guests?
Yes, uh, Kumar Vaswani had raised his hand and indicated he wished to make a comment or ask a question.
Yes, thank you, Matt. Um, Kumar Vaswani, Trent Street. It just, my only comment is that it seems unconventional to me that a project of this magnitude wouldn't be bid out. And, uh, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there, are there further? Anybody else, Matt?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I move that we defer consideration of this to our July meeting until we have more information.
Second. The second was by Councilmember Kumar. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, excellent. Next item, public hearing motion to authorize an in-person 4th of July celebration at the Somerset Town Hall to be held on Sunday, July 4th. And the reason why this is on, this is on here is because the, I believe, in the consent agenda, basically, the, 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 all the public facilities of the town are closed until the end of July. And I wanted the council to have the opportunity to weigh in on whether we should have a in-person July 4th celebration or on Zoom like last year. Council President Circa, do you have any questions?
Um, no questions. I think it's a good idea. I think we're ready.
Councilor Ball.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just point out Camp Somerset is using the park already at that time. And so it sure looks like we're open when they're there. So I, I don't see a problem with the, the July 4th celebration being real.
Councilmember Frank.
Yes, I believe the county has basically opened up office spaces throughout the county. So we aren't under any restrictions anymore, so I support it. I think it'd be great.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Heller.
I agree, it'd be fine.
Councilor Kumar.
No questions.
Okay, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests? Matt?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Yeah, buddy, okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I can give it a shot.
Can I? Vote for it, of course.
Okay. Okay, I'm just gonna read it from the agenda. I'm picking the ones I can easily read from, from the agenda. Okay, mo- motion to authorize an in-person 4th of July celebration at the Somerset Town Hall to be held on Sunday, July 4th.
And I see Councilmember Frank seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. The next item is to introduce ordinance number 4213, an ordinance to regulate small wireless telecommunications facilities and the rights of way. And I guess I will turn this over to the town manager, who I'm sure will turn it over to the town attorney.
Sure, absolutely. Take it away, Ron.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager. Well, as the council's aware from our training session, this ordinance was adopted in February of 2019. But when the town moved the code to a professional publisher, uh, in, what was it, um, in October? Somehow this ordinance slipped through the cracks because it was recently adopted and didn't end up in the recodified version of the code. So we just need to re-adopt it so that it is added to the new version of the code that's being put together by the vendor general code. And so it's up for introduction tonight and then adoption at next month's meeting.
Thank you. Council President Circa, do you have any questions?
No, no questions. I remember approving it the last time around.
Thank you. Councilor Ball, do you have any questions?
Well, um, yes, sorry. I, I mean, I know it's been introduced, and I'm, I'm sure I'm gonna vote for it. The first point is Matt's name is misspelled right at the end, so that needs fixing apart from anything else. Um, the, the second point is that, um, it's a very complicated ordinance. And where did it come from? I mean, we did, the, the council didn't derive it itself, it must have been draft language from somewhere. Where was it from?
So I drafted it, and it was drafted in response to the 28, September 2018 FCC order compelling local governments to adopt standards if standards were to be imposed with respect to small cell deployments. So it was drafted in order to have some standards on the books for when that FCC order took effect. And it was drafted and adopted, knowing that one day the town would need to revisit the standards and assess whether they are adequate. At the time the ordinance was adopted, the issue at the state, county, and federal level was still unknown. Dust hadn't settled yet with respect to some litigation. And, you know, as you may know, the county is now looking to amend its rules from a zoning perspective with respect to where small cell towers can be located.
Uh, it's so you got the, the 1,000 feet separation and the 15 feet height from standard sources, I presume, right?
Yes, I looked at ordinances across the country and perhaps most notably, city of Gaithersburg and Montgomery County.
All right.
To borrow some basic standards.
There is one clause in the definition of small towers that, um,
Okay, so Councilor Barr, we don't need to get into the weeds tonight. Tonight is just whether it's gonna be introduced or not. And
Okay, well, I don't, I've been, I don't want it to hold up adoption. So I ju- I just wanna make sure that we're all on safe grounds here so that we can just adopt it cleanly next month.
Well, but it, but it still has to go through a process, so, so we don't, you don't need to take time tonight.
Well, this is, this is the last point. And it's, again, if it needs to be modified, that's, that's all I'm trying to, to, to see. It's the definition of small wireless facility and point five. Me, is the facility. Me is the facility does not result in human exposure to radio frequency radiation in excess of applicable safety standards under federal law. And I looked at that and I said, so if it does, then it's not a small tower, small wireless facility. Um, therefore, in principle, no small wireless facility in this definition can expose anybody to radio frequency radiation against of federal standards. Is that actually what we intended?
Uh, well, I'm not I'm not prepared to answer that tonight. I'll have to.
Yeah, I mean, please take a look at it. And and I mean, it's just so that it's ready for next month.
Well, like, again, you know, as during ordinarily, this would have been on a work session agenda before it was introduced.
And I I know that we're trying to just.
But 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 I mean, I think I think your questions are good because uh, it it does address to the town attorney, what, is there an urgency that this be introduced tonight?
Well, Matt's just sent me some information and maybe so Matt, is it is it your understanding that general code is in the process of incorporating the ordinance that was adopted?
Yeah, I just noticed that there's actually a tab in our code that says new laws, and there's a list of seven, seven of our ordinances that haven't been incorporated into our code but are listed on our website. And so this has an effective date of March 12th, 2019, and has been signed on there.
Oh, but I but I, yeah, but I don't think we gave it to general code, and that's why general code did not include it in the the current version of the code.
That could be.
So so
I think we still need to have re-adopted and because we're we're assigning new section numbers.
Right.
But to Councilmember Barr's question, um, so it it appears that there might be an interest in amending what was already adopted.
Well, which which certainly can be done.
So that so that's why what I would suggest is that the council introduced it tonight and that it be discussed at the the upcoming work session, so that concerns that Councilmember Barr and others might have about the way it was originally adopted be addressed. So that's why I was saying, Councilmember Barr, that tonight, I don't think the council is prepared to go into the weeds about it, but we will make sure, since there is an urgency, that this is on the agenda for the work session so that it can be passed the way you want it to be next month.
Yeah, and I I believe that the definition of small wireless facility with those five enumerated paragraphs comes right from the FCC order. That was the definition that the FCC was dictating.
Okay, right.
But I'll I'll confirm that.
Please confirm it and then we'll go from there.
But we'll make sure that you're, did you have any other questions, Councilor? Councilor Frank, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller.
No, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kumar.
No questions. I remember Ron briefing well.
And there's no hearing for this, so are you prepared to make the intro? Is any council prepared to move for the introduction?
I move for the introduction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second was Councilmember Kumar. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Excellent. And we are almost to the end of the meeting, and I want to congratulate all of you on conducting yourselves, using all of the incredible information you obtained in your orientation. And with that, I will turn it over to the town manager for his financial and administrative reports.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, on the financial side, a couple of, couple of things I just wanted to update you on. One is that um, the income tax, as it's listed in the report, is very, very low. That should bump up in, we still have not gotten, there's no income tax um, distribution for the month of April, and we haven't got our May distribution yet. So that'll bump up another $300,000 or so. Um, still well below what our budgeted and projected numbers are. But that sort of leads me into my next point, which is the uh, the Rescue Plan Act. Um, I think I forwarded you all the information on on that, so um, I will begin filling out that information this week, um, so that we can get our funds and most of the recommendations from the um, from the National League of Cities, for anybody that sat in on that, is sort of the first step would be to to maybe replace any lost revenues. And so we might be able to bridge the gap there. Um, let's see. So um, in terms of expenses, I don't remember if I had spoken to you all during any of the orientations about the win case, but um, there was a um, mayor's nodding yes, so I won't, I won't uh, go over it again, but um, our our liabilities have been severely cut, which is, which is great. Um, essentially, a no interest loan that we're just paying back over the next 80 months. Um, let's see. So uh, just a quick update on on some committees. Uh, the Equity Inclusion Committee is planning to meet this week. I think they're gonna look at some some things that you all have even talked about uh, this evening. So I think they were gonna look at some of our contracts and um, perhaps present to you any recommendations um, as we consider a procurement policy. The um, Public Safety Committee had their survey that went out townwide, and so they're planning to meet this month to discuss the results of that survey. The Stormwater Committee is meeting tomorrow evening, and they're going to look at um, a proposal from a firm to help the town with consideration of any uh, stormwater um, changes to the code and um, any practices that the town might incorporate to to help with that. Um, and we got sort of an update from the Tennis Committee earlier. Um, a couple of, a couple of contract things coming up. One is, um, so I will add after after uh, be back in action tonight, I'll I'll receive a few bids for us to consider at the July meeting for the uh, for the pool deck. In addition, um, we have uh, an outstanding audit RFP that um, we'll, we can make a selection at the July meeting for our auditors, and then we'll, we'll get right into that. Um, and then finally, um, we, I'm, I started drafting a uh, a street cleaning and vacuuming proposal um, that could go before you, probably in August as opposed to next month. Um, one other project I wanted to update you on is the records retention project. I think uh, I think I'd I'd like to have uh, Donna give you all an update, maybe this this month on where we stand. We have a uh, we have a records retention schedule that is uh, being looked at by the state of Maryland uh, for approval that would replace our current schedule. Um, we have a lot of documents that didn't fit anywhere on our retention schedule. And so legally, there's nothing we can do with them right now. So they're just sitting there and so she's she's been working hard and doing a great job going through the documents, making it easier and um, a more efficient way of filing and being able to to send our documents off to the state and to shred um, as needed. Um, and then finally, I just wanted to let you all know, I think uh, I don't remember who who uh, among you had referenced it before, but starting June 21st, Camp Somerset will start at the town hall. So um, I met with uh, Greg Metway, who is uh, is one of the yeah, I think he runs it for uh, for Somerset Elementary. So we went over um, the space that they'll use and um, uh, that will, that will basically go through the the month of July. And with that, I will just open myself up to any questions.
Thank you for that excellent report. Councilmember Circa, do you have, President Circa, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr.
Can we put a discussion of the art of funds on the work session agenda?
I will note that, yes. Thank you.
And I think also, they're supposed to be, uh, the Budget Committee is supposed to make a report, but we can talk, that's a good point. Councilmember Frank, do you have any questions of Matt?
No, but thank you, Matt. Great job.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Do you have any questions?
No, but thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Councilmember Kumar.
Thank you, Matt. No questions.
Okay, well, with that, I want to congratulate you again on an outstanding inaugural meeting. And I look forward to seeing everyone next uh, Tuesday. Is that right? June 15th at 5?
June 15th at 5pm.
At 5pm tomorrow.
Thank you all. Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.